That's not acceptable.
Call to order this work session. This session will be a orientation for current and newly elected members. Do I hand it off to you?
Sure, sure. So we scheduled this to try and make sure everybody's coming in with the same foundational knowledge about kind of how things work and what things do. And you'll hear me as I go through. I'm going to try and remember to talk about kind of what is changeable by the council. If you want to change meeting practices, what requires, you know, a vote and those kinds of things so that we can try and get through this. I'll say the charter and municipal code 2.04 have been here for a while. The handbook, council in the past took a run at it but never adopted a handbook. So what you have here is kind of updated for current time to try and help provide some guidelines that are not elsewhere laid out for how council's going to work, how council meetings will work. In some cases, from my perspective, trying to update things like remote access for meetings and which until two years ago was really not a thing. And so trying to get that addressed. So I'm going to start with the charter. It is, in essence, kind of our city's constitution. The only way to amend the charter is by a vote of the people. That can be presented to people in several ways. You can have a citizen-sponsored initiative where they gather signatures and put something out that they wish to amend into the charter or out of the charter. The council can put something, an amendment on the ballot, to change some language in the charter. There are, in some communities, if the council is interested in, say, updating the charter, there's oftentimes a blue ribbon committee appointed to kind of look at it and say, what all would we want to propose? Most of the time recently, the charter amendments, and if you follow Portland News at all, they had big amendments to change from a commissioner to a council manager form of government, to change a lot about their structure. I think they had three ballot questions out. They have, their charter commission is working on some more ideas for changes at the local level. Philomath, in the November election, I'm sorry, I guess in the May election, modified their charter to go to four-year terms on the council instead of what they'd had, which were two-year terms. So their November ballot was the first time that they were really bringing people in and they had half the candidates running to do a two-year term and half on a four-year term so that they would be more like what we do with council seats. I'm not proposing that we pursue charter amendments, but it is something that if you, if there were aspects in the charter that you were interested in modifying, we would want to talk about how to move forward with that. I will say, yeah.
Nancy, has
Yes.
Has our charter ever been changed at all?
Sure. It was, it was last updated in 2004.
Okay.
And, and, and I will say, one of the things that Mayor Aziz commented about was he wished the mayor was on a four-year term instead of a two-year term. To make that change would be a charter amendment if the council wanted to pursue that. And if you don't, you don't, and, and you don't move forward with, with any changes. The charter does lay out the number of council positions. It does lay out, and, and this varies from community to community, but the council definition in the charter are the city council members plus the mayor, defined as "the council" as a singular word. So when we look at things like setting a quorum, it's not a quorum of six, it's a quorum of seven. So that's how we get to four. People have to vote one way or the other in order to, to make quorum, in order to have the meeting go forward. And you'll see sometimes when a couple of people are gone, and particularly critical for the city recorder to know in advance if you're not going to be here, if we don't have a quorum, we really can't meet and do any business. Even a, a work session like this without a quorum won't go forward, even though there's no vote. Sure.
Well, I have a question then on that point after I just handed it over to, did I need to call roll on these type of meetings? Okay.
Good question, though. The charter also lays out who you, as a body, hire. You hire the municipal court judge, the city attorney, and me. And you'll see you have tabs with our contracts in here. It's important for you to know the terms of those contracts and to know what we, your three hires are expected to do for you and for the community. I'll tell you that the judge and the attorney's contracts are both up in June 2023. So in the next couple of months, we are likely to have an executive session with you and talk with you about whether you wish to continue those relationships or seek a new attorney or a new judge, if you want to continue them, kind of the, the bounds of, of what to negotiate and how to negotiate those contracts. I will say, you don't see the judge very much. The judge doesn't come to council meetings much and doesn't speak. So there is an annual evaluation for each of your three appointees. I think it's important at some point that you try to get to municipal court to a session to observe the judge. Just, you're going to be evaluating him and, and it's kind of helpful to say, yeah, you're doing what I expect, or you're being disrespectful to people or whatever, because it's an important representative for the council in the community. There are some people who really only come into direct contact with city offices at court, right? Fighting, fighting a speeding ticket. And so knowing how he's operating in the courtroom can, I think, be beneficial when you come up to that evaluation. You see a lot more of me. You'll see a lot more of Trey. You can, as a counselor, you can call Trey, our, our city attorney, and ask questions about the legality of things, how you might want to go forward with amending an ordinance or code language. You can always roll those kinds of questions to me and we'll pursue getting information for you also. Since I'm the primary contact you have, it's important for you to know I serve at the pleasure of the council. My contract expires at the end of 2024 calendar year. But you are certainly welcome to fire me anytime you wish to. But it takes a vote of four. But, but that is, the relationship we have is that I, I do serve at your pleasure. And I am the administrative head of the organization. So I'm the one who hires and fires all of the rest of the employees. I make sure performance reviews are done, all of that. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into the handbook. But, but I think it's important for you to know we have that relationship. The charter says the council has to meet once a month, which means even if we don't have business, we get together and do business. But the 2.04 is really where we lay out that those meetings are going to be the second and fourth Wednesdays. The second Wednesday is going to be at six. The fourth Wednesday is going to be like today at, at noon. Because the specifics of the meeting date are in code, the council can choose to change those dates and times by modifying the code. And we'll talk more when we get to that. An important note that to take action, it requires the full council. It requires a, a motion and a vote on the public record. So there's, when we talk about executive sessions, there may be discussion about whether or not you're going to keep Trey a city attorney, for example. That discussion would be an executive session, but ultimately you have to come out of that and have a motion. This is who we want to contract with. This is how much we're going to pay. It's critically important in terms of state law that the compensation piece always has to be in public. And, and that's because it's the people's money. We want to make sure that there is a record of that. Mayor chairs the council meeting, the council president. If the mayor is not present, we'll, we'll run that meeting. And the charter lays out basically how that relationship works over time. The mayor also appoints committee members. So we have Parks, Trees and Trails, the Library Advisory Board. We have a senior center advisory board. We get, from time to time, ad hoc committees. The mayor makes those appointments, but it's with the consensus of the council. And those come through on consent agenda where the mayor says, I, I'm appointing XYZ. And when you pass the consent agenda, that makes it happen. If you have opposition to that appointment, you would need to pull that off of the consent agenda and have that discussion. And then there is a lot about my job and the powers and duties in terms of the city manager. And again, a lot of that has to do with administration of the organization and the responsibilities that I have for, for purchasing, for setting a budget every year, setting agendas, working with the mayor to, to make sure agendas move forward. That's, that's an important piece. Kim Schaefer is your city recorder. I, I hire, but the city recorder is called out here in terms of keeping a record of all meetings. That is a requirement of state law, that we have minutes, that they are reviewed and approved by the council as a true representation of the discussion at the meeting. I will tell you, sometimes reading through and approving minutes can feel like a kind of eyes roll up in your head moment. But I think it's important to remember, we've been a city for a long, long time. And we oftentimes have to go back two minutes from 100 years ago, 80 years ago, looking for a decision that was made, how that decision was made, whether it was to acquire a right-of-way, place a sewer line, set a budget, that, that there is an element of having to look back, that those minutes create a really critical record about what decision was made and in particular, why that decision was made. And having that record, I think, is, is foundational to a community. And I will tell you, we have a lot of people who go online and read through our minutes, right? Our historical documents, because frankly, they can be kind of fun to read through. In part, just to look at the language that was used. You know, I pray and beseech you put a sewer line to my house. People don't do that so much anymore, but, but it, it is a record and a reflection of that time. There is more in the, or in the charter. I'm not going to go through in terms of, of how we deal with vacancies. Should we have a vacancy in office? We'll, we'll deal with that when it pops up. But I'm going to stop there on charter and see if you all have questions or comments or anything you want to discuss about that one.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. So like I said, 2.04 really lays out in, in ordinance form, a little bit more detail about how we're going to run meetings and identifies the city manager's responsibility for setting the agenda in consultation with the mayor. You all should be getting, every week and a half, two weeks, you get a pending agenda items table that kind of lays out what's coming. You should review those if you've got questions, you want to know what something is. You can certainly feel free to call me. If you've got constituents who may be following an issue that you see coming, it's an opportunity to give them a heads up. You may want to, may want to be present for the March meeting because we're going to be taking up XYZ at that meeting. Those are always pending until the actual agenda comes out. Sometimes what we find, let me think about it. So at some point in the next year, we will finish the wastewater treatment master plan, and you may see that show up on, let's say, a February 2024 agenda. And then it moves to March 2024. And then it moves to April 2024 because we know it's coming, but the consultants needed one more rewrite on this section, or we had questions about something else. So you do find things move forward and backward on that agenda. And so it is never set in stone until the actual packet comes out. But anytime you have questions, feel free to give a, a shout out to what's happening. Generally, we will work the agenda as it's scheduled in the council meeting. We don't often move things around on the agenda. And it's a good practice to not take up and, and discuss and decide on something that was not on the agenda. Because if you're making a decision, we did not warn the neighborhood or the community was coming, you can end up with people saying, well, but wait, I would have commented, and my comments might have given you a piece of information that you would have decided differently. And so if there's something new that comes up, whether it's a community comment, whether it's just something that, that a constituent has raised with you and you raise it at the table, that's going to be something that we'll schedule on a future agenda to make sure we let the public know what we're going to talk about and that, that a decision would be made and they get an opportunity to weigh in, either formally at the council meeting or informally with you in another venue. So that's kind of the criticality of having that agenda is making sure we're transparent with the members of the public about the business we're, we're doing. Again, regular meetings, 6:00 PM on the second Wednesday, noon on the fourth Wednesday. If that continues to work for this body, then, then that's fine. We do schedule some special meetings. We try hard to not do that. You'll note that for the next several months, your agendas are pretty loaded, in part because we're doing a lot of kind of foundational, basic stuff. Then we might go several months without having the second meeting in a month because we don't have anything that needs a little work session time, more opportunity for you to ask questions. We do identify in here that we might meet for executive sessions. State law identifies what we can and cannot have executive sessions about. The most common we do, property acquisition, employee performance, or hiring. Labor negotiations are the, the three most common executive session purposes. There are others that we may pull in. Litigation. We get sued, we sue somebody else, we're going to have a discussion with the council in executive session about that. And generally, the purpose for an executive session is to, to let the council have a confidential discussion, oftentimes providing guidance to staff. For example, we're going to negotiate for a property purchase, so you're willing to offer between X and Y. You don't really want to tell, you know, the person you're negotiating against who's watching the meeting, well, we just agreed we'd pay $7 million for that. And, you know, we come in and lowball you at 100K. You know, we could have gotten it for two, except that you knew we were going for seven, or we'd, we'd go as high as seven. So that's really the purpose for an executive session for us. And then there are some comments in here associated with how to make motions, how to withdraw motions. We do work off of Robert's Rules of Order. They can get a little bit kluge. There is an attachment to the handbook that is kind of a summary, one-pagey cheat sheet on Robert's Rules of Orders. We don't generally stand on a super strict parliamentary procedure.
Well, maybe we ought to think about it. You just caused the thing to fall.
I did. That was, we need a better nail here.
That's why Jason took off.
And, yes. Yes, he knew he'd have to go fix it. It would drive him nuts to not go fix it. Our city attorney is our parliamentary, and you will find that he can guide you in terms of how to make a motion. So again, when the council packet comes out and you see something and you think, I'm going to do something, I, I feel like I need to do something different than just making a standard, I move to approve. You may want to make a motion to amend something. I, I don't like the wording in this sentence, and I would like to modify that. You can always call Trey and say, tell me how to word this motion. This is what I want to accomplish. How do I word it? And, and he will give you that guidance and help you with how to write that motion out. There, you can get down into micro, you know, we're dividing questions and doing those kinds of things. I think for the most part, we try to simplify how information is presented, to not give you 17 kind of either or choices, but it's a this or nothing opportunity. But if it gets complex, we'll, we'll turn to a parliamentary procedure to help us get through that. Questions on that? I will come back here and talk about how we would amend 2.04 if you wished to do that. What we would look for, I'm, I'm going to pick on something easy and, and weird. If the council doesn't want to meet on Wednesdays, you'd prefer to meet Saturday mornings at 6 o'clock in the morning with a pot of coffee and a plate of donuts.
I'm up.
Then, then my suggestion would be that you raise that in a council comments portion of the meeting. There's discussion of the council at the time, then that's, are we interested in pursuing that? Yes, we're all unanimous. 6:00 AM Saturdays with a plate of donuts and a cup of coffee is exactly what we want to do. Then as staff, we would go back and draft the amended language and bring it back at the next meeting for you to vote on. That's how, raising something at the table that wasn't in a packet would work in terms of how the council would discuss it and, and staff's reaction, rather than, okay, let's have a motion to make that change. You can't do that without the written ordinance language in front of you and voting on that ordinance at that time, right? So just wanted to make sure we were all clear on how to make a change in that, in that document. Okay. Moving on to the handbook. Again, this is working off of a draft from 2011 that never got adopted. If the council wishes to keep this in its form or amendments, we would probably bring it to the next meeting for you to adopt by resolution. This would be the easiest document for you all to change, but would be something we would look at bringing in probably every two to four years, depends on how many new counselors we have, to say, is this still how you want to operate? So what we tried to do in this was maybe refine down what's in the charter to 2.04 to a little more practical progression and document through some more specifics in terms of, you know, we've said, let the city recorder know if you're not going to be a meeting, but adding in language that says, just as Wayne is today, he can't physically be here, but he can participate remotely and can vote remotely, and that, and that serves. I, years ago, you had to be physically in the meeting to vote. You couldn't even call in and vote. But pandemics and technology have allowed us more opportunity to do differently. We have put in here the order of business that the current agenda follows. Again, this is a place where the council may wish to say, we'd like to do something different. So for example, we currently allow people at the beginning and the end of the meeting, periods of public comment, we give them five minutes. Some communities give three. Some communities have no time limits. Some communities say the comments at the beginning of the meeting have to be on something that's in the agenda. And then if it's not an agenda item, it comes at the end of the meeting and people sit through the meeting. Some people only, only written comments are allowed. Nobody actually speaks at the meeting. So it, and it is an area that I think from, from a council perspective is critical in terms of your hearing from your constituents. And I think it's important to recognize, you know, when somebody gets the guts to walk in the room and then sit in the chair and speak on a microphone, which is not normal for most people, it, it takes, it takes a little chutzpah. So how you manage and work with that and how you best address what you feel like your community needs is, is, I, I think is a critical element for you. What's here can be changed, or you can leave it exactly as it is. We go with five minutes and people can speak on whatever they wish to speak on. Again, on executive sessions, we will let you know when we're going, did I skip a page? We'll let you know if we're going to schedule an executive session. I don't think we have any right now until March. I believe that we have one tentatively planned for March that will be on confidential materials. You can let me know if you feel like there's something that you would like to discuss in executive session. I think we'll do one, we may, we may do two in March to also talk about renewing the judge and the attorney's contracts and where the council wants to go with those to give adequate time. The challenge, if you decided you didn't want a judge or an attorney, would be if we term those agreements on June 30th, 2023, who's going to be ready to step in? So we would want some time to make sure we can, we can find someone else to come and do that work. We do have the open meetings. We have public comments at all of our meetings and allow people to come in and speak on any subject. And you will, you will hear that. We have two kinds of public hearings, land use public hearings. This is why I made Kelly come, because she's land use public hearing person. And then non-land use public hearings. And we oftentimes kind of ignore the non-land use part. But you'll have public hearings certainly for fees and for adopting the budget. And wanted to make sure that you kind of, it, it's a much less formalized process. It's a staff report, tell me what you want to say. Members of the public, tell me what you want to say. Close the public hearing, have discussion, vote, and move on. Land use public hearing, and there's a, a table in here that kind of identifies the differences, you're speaking to criteria, not to, I don't like it. I mean, people can come in and say about the budget, I don't like how much money you're spending at the wastewater treatment plant. I think you should cut $100,000 out of that budget. You can have that discussion, make that decision. People come in and say, I don't want them putting a swimming pool in the backyard next door because, you know, the kids are going to make noise all night. That's not to let that person put in a swimming pool or not. And so the land use public hearing is going to really lock down much tighter what you can do and how you can do it. It's also the place where you're going to have to declare whether or not you have bias and whether or not you've had ex parte contact. So bias is when, let me think about an example. If my next door neighbor wants to put in a swimming pool, and I nearly drowned when I was five and I hate swimming pools, I've come in with a bias. I'm not going to let anybody have a swimming pool ever. I, I have a bias against swimming pools that is going to potentially impact my decision. Ex parte contact is when the neighbors of that person have been calling you saying, don't let them put in a swimming pool, you evil, evil city council member. And you've had that discussion just with you, not with anybody else. In, in both of those cases, you have to declare, I have a bias, or I've had ex parte contact. In the case of bias, I have a bias, but I can make the decision on the facts before me, or I can't, and I'm going to recuse myself, I'm going to step out. Ex parte contact can be, I've had ex parte contact, here's who's contacted me, here's what they've said. If people are sending you emails, you can send those emails to Kelly. The rest of the council gets that same information. It's when you're making a decision based on the super secret information I have, no one else has. And that's where you can get really hosed up. So you want to make sure everybody has the same information. For any decision that you make, if you have a conflict of interest or a potential conflict of interest, you have to declare those, whether it's on a land use issue. I own the property and when they build the big hotel on it, I'll make a lot of money. Means I have to step out. I cannot participate, shouldn't sit at the table, I shouldn't sit here going, my wife, my wife, right? I would have to declare the purpose of that conflict and then I step out. No participation whatsoever because I'm going to financially benefit. That is a specific and clear conflict of interest. A potential conflict of interest is where, let me think, my husband's business will go into this building. Now, I don't get paid by that business, but my husband does. And maybe I want to make the decision on his behalf because I really want him to get paid more money? So now I have a potential conflict and I have to declare that. And I either can make that decision without taking into consideration my personal pecuniary benefit, or I can't, and again, I recuse myself and leave that conversation. Did I cover all that right? Good coaching here. So those are issues that you do have to be aware of. And, and you do have to acknowledge openly. I, I will say, some of my formal education is discussing Tammany Hall, right? And the big brouhaha about Teapot Dome scandals was all about elected officials who had specific knowledge, would, you know, there's going to be a highway interchange here, so I'm going to go buy the land from you for a dollar, but I'm going to turn around and sell it to ODOT for $2 million because they really need it for that interchange. And if you had known, you'd held on to the property and sold it for $2 million. But I had that deep, dark secret and I have now benefited. I've had a significant conflict of interest. And it got a lot of people fired. And it, it started making some changes in government. It's ultimately what led to things like sunshine laws, open meetings, open records, no cigar smoke-filled backroom kind of deals that were being, I know it, but that's the way it is. General decorum, again, Robert's Rules of Order. I like to think of it as we are a civic organization. It's beneficial for us to be civil in our interactions with each other and with our constituents. We are respectful of each other. Don't interrupt, don't trot over, don't call each other names at the table, and just basically be grownups. It is generally requested that if you want to speak, you get the mayor to acknowledge you as opposed to, let me just barge in. That can be difficult in getting the mayor's attention if, if he's over this way and KJ wants to talk, can be a little bit of a challenge. But, and I, again, we don't stand on that as some kind of formal, I'm going to beat you down if you don't, but just, just to be polite. You do have the opportunity to censure a counselor if you think that they are not following the council's rules. That hopefully will never happen. If it gets to that, we'll be having lots of discussion with the city attorney. If it gets to that, we'll be having lots of discussion with the city attorney. So on to council relationships, again, your primary relationship with staff is with me. And then if you bring something to me, I'll go to the department that has that issue and will work on it. There are some things that I think are easier for you to just take directly to a director. So there's a stop sign missing at an intersection. You can, you know, just let Jason know and they know to go out and, and replace it. A lot of times what you may get from a constituent is, is a question, you don't know where to go for the answer and coming to me, I can round up, I find oftentimes the things that come to me need three or four people to weigh in because there are multiple parties involved in whatever the issue is. And it's easier for me to kind of work through that internally and then get an answer back to you. I do have the responsibility to negotiate labor agreements. And the last couple of documents here are current AFSMI contract, American Federation of Municipal State County Employees, and our Teamsters contract, which covers everybody except the management staff at the Justice Center. Oh, and doesn't cover IT, who are also based at the Justice Center, but all the police department employees. The current contracts both expire at the end of fiscal '24. I would expect sometime this fall, we will get notice from the unions asking to negotiate agreements. We will probably do a training session on labor negotiations with you as we get closer to that, because it is not unusual for labor groups to reach out to you as counselors, asking for commitments on things. And you all need to know, at this point, no commitment may be made by you. If you do, it becomes an unfair labor practice and we can get slapped with all kinds of penalties for doing that. So if you're out with Jason's crew on a Vector truck, looking at what they do when they clean a sewer and they say to you, boy, I sure think I should be paid more money. And you say, yeah, I sure think you should too. Skip that one, say, well, that's an interesting comment, thanks. And you can let me know what they think, but you can't be in a place where you are agreeing on a compensation issue, you know, I, I don't think I should have to be at work at seven in the morning, I'd like to come, drag it in at noon. Those kinds of things are, are elements of work that have to be negotiated through those labor agreements with the labor unit. So that's all I'm going to say on that at this point, but we'll come back with a little bit more as we head down the path. You all as a body set policies. You do that by getting advice from your professional staff. You hear from constituents about what they want or don't want. And you get paid big bucks to make hard decisions. That's, yeah, it's great. It, it is a place, I think we recognize you all sit, right? Is, is you're making oftentimes the hardest of hard decisions and, and, and you're compensated quite well for that.
I've been disliked for less.
You got, you got lunch, I don't know what more you want. So it's important that you listen to constituents, that you, at least check your email or voicemails, you know, once a day, every other day, something. Constituents contact you because they are looking for a response or they are looking to tell you something. There is a dangerous vehicle parked on the street here and I think someone's going to run into it. Can become, okay, let's just notify the police department, have them go look at it. We try to have eyes everywhere, we can't. You will have constituents who have eyes everywhere and they will report. And that's always helpful to us. And I don't want you to feel like, you know, it's another complaint. We don't know where every pothole is in town. When we hear about it, we can go and address it, and that's, that's the goal that we have. So it's important that you recognize constituents are going to use email, voicemail, they're going to hit you up in the grocery store line, they're going to hit you up at the gym when you're playing tennis or working out, they're going to call you at home. I will say you should feel completely free to like quit answering the phone at 10 o'clock because that's when you go to bed and, you know, you don't, you don't need to hear that. You will hear from me mostly either, you know, I'm going to do in person or one-on-one on a telephone or an email with, when I have information for the whole council. I will occasionally use a text message, particularly if it's something urgent, because generally speaking, when you get a text, you pay more attention to that in the, in the moment than you do to an email. So if there's another bomb scare at Walmart and we have all kinds of red lights and siren going around there, I'm, I'm more likely to send a text letting you know that that's going on, it's under control, whatever, than, than to do an email or let me call each one of you individually. So just, just know that. I do have, I have all of your phone numbers, so there you go. And you should feel free to call or text me as you, as you need to, including weekends. I'm, I'm available and I would prefer that you use me as opposed to another staff member if there's something on a weekend, so there you go. Your policy role is most often expressed in one of several ways. So it's in ordinance in the municipal code. And you already know that at your first meeting in January, you amended the municipal code surrounding building codes based on a need to update and, and bring our code language into compliance with some other rules. Those are things that are staff driven. It's not something that the council said, hey, we should be updating this language. It really, that kind of thing comes from us. But it is a policy statement about what we're going to do and how we're going to operate as an organization. Ordinances are usually, but not always codified into the municipal code. The municipal code is available on our website and is, is very searchable. I find it very user friendly, as is the charter located there. The second way that you show your policy position is by adopting things by resolution. I like to think of ordinances being longer term to semi-permanent, I mean, they can always change, and resolutions being a little more transient. So we adopt a budget by resolution because next year, that resolution is worthless. We have a new resolution, we have a new budget. And they tend to be a little more flexible in terms of what you do with a resolution. Adopting something by resolution will never be codified into municipal code. It's, it's there and then doesn't disappear, it just gets kind of overwritten, if you will. There are actions that we would have in the Vision 2040 Plan that say, basically, this is council's priority and that means policy. So in the last vision plan, we had actions like we're going to build Strawberry Plaza, we're going to build a welcome sign, we're going to work on the water treatment plant and build a new water treatment plant. Those actions are policy statements. And oftentimes they have money that goes with them, right? Very little happens free of charge. And so the budget becomes another major policy document every year because usually what gets funded gets done. So y'all know, we are in the middle of West Side Interceptor. This is hopefully the last part of West Side Interceptor. I have found records back in the early 1990s where West Side Interceptor was being discussed. So we're going to put this one to bed, but, but funding that makes that a policy priority. We're going to make this happen and see it to completion. That comes through in, in terms of council direction, capital improvement program, and then the annual budget to actually budget the money to spend to do it. Those are your really, your four kind of major policy areas that you focus and where your decisions are reflected and how that is reflected then to the community in terms of, here's what we've adopted. So I'm going to stop there. That is the end of what we have in the handbook. The rest of the information is, is available for you all. I will say there is, the first attachment in the handbook is the municipal code section. This comes out of the land development code on how to conduct a, a land use public hearing. It's longer than a non-land use public hearing procedure. And a lot of that is because you've got an applicant, you've got maybe people who are not supportive of the application and you split that conversation and discussion back and forth. And then we have a couple of notes on email retention requirements. Just remember that all of these kinds of communications are public records. A lot of what you get may be those kind of temporary transitory emails. Can you come to a meeting on Friday? No, but Monday would work. You don't have to keep those, but the things where a community member is saying, hey, vote no on this, vote yes on that, those are all records that need to be kept. If they are in your city email, then they will be on the city server when we get a public records request, and we probably get several every month for a variety of, of things. We can pull those email records. If they sent them to your home email address because they knew you from the before times, it's always easy when you send a response back to copy your city council email address so that it puts that into the city's official records. I will tell you that we've had requests for counselors' Facebook postings and conversations. That turns into, now you got to take like print screens of your messages. Your text messages can be discoverable. So all of those are things that you got to, you got to keep in mind, you have to keep. Again, text message, somebody saying, would you meet me for coffee on Thursday morning? That's a transitory, but their text message where they're telling you, here's, here's how you need to vote on something, or I want you to do something, that becomes a record issue. So questions, comments, thoughts?
Actually, I had a question. On the conflict of interest, what is, what tools do we have at our disposal to make sure it's a conflict of interest? Did we go through your office, city attorney?
It is, it is most often that you would go to the city attorney to talk about what the conflict of interest is or potential conflict of interest, and then how to best address it. So a direct conflict of interest is you or a close family member, which is like, they aren't yet including your dog and cat, but they're pretty close to who those, those people are. It's your kids, your parents, your siblings, I think, your spouse. So a real conflict of interest is, it's a pecuniary issue. You're going to make money or you would lose money if this decision goes forward. So, and I will say, you may, in the course of your time on council, be asked to make a decision that would cost you money, but it would cost everyone money. So you may be asked, I'm going to throw this out, you may be asked to, to put before the voters whether or not we should have a local option levy. That's going to cost me money on my tax bill if it passes. But you're all making that decision and it's not a, wait a minute, I'm going to put out that Nancy is going to pay a special property tax and nobody else is. And at that point, it's like, no, no, that's my pecuniary detriment and I'm going to vote no on it, right? Because why would I pay and nobody else is? So you have to think about a lot of the specifics. If you think you're going to face that, have a conversation with Trey and he will guide you through it's real or it's perceived, and then how to disclose that and what your actions need to be.
I just want to add, I know I myself have reached out to Oregon Government Ethics Commission here or there over the years, just to make sure I was above board on things. An example was I was a member of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and I wasn't sure if I could vote on the contract, you know, to award at the time, you know, the, the chamber, the funds for operating the visitor center. Anyway, they walked me through that whole process and, and it was a simple pickup of the phone and somebody actually answered, which is sometimes rare, but it's also in cases maybe where our city attorney is not available, they're also a resource as well. I just wanted to add that in.
And I will say, they, it's probably going to be rare that it is, boy, do you clearly have a conflict of interest. It's almost always going to be in shades of gray. And you just, you should know, if Trey was here, he would say this, if you get, you know, if you get an attorney and you ask them and then they're going to dig into, if you have two questions, two attorneys here, the answer is going to be an argument, so just be prepared for that. But, but he is your, he is your best bet to help walk you through. And I will say, I think we recognize in a small town, it can be difficult, right? Everybody knows everybody, everybody's related to somebody else in town. There are cousins and marriages and, and those kinds of things, which can create some challenges, I think, in a, in a small town that don't necessarily exist in a large metropolitan area. Questions, comments? And am I, one of my questions would be, would you feel like the handbook is helpful and we should throw it out as, to be adopted by resolution at the next council meeting? Or as it is, is fine and we don't need to adopt it? I, I think the, that's a council decision really, whether you feel like you need or want to adopt it as a, I don't know, kind of a guiding informational document, I guess.
I'm kind of hands on, I kind of like to see how these things apply before we take that step myself.
I was going to say the same thing, let's give the new folks a month to kind of digest it.
To know, to find out what we don't know.
See how, see how it applies and then revisit it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well. I would, I mean, if we do wind up diving into and adopting this handbook, there are a couple pieces in here, I mean, maybe we could open up for discussion at that time. In particular, meeting attendance. I know we don't have a certain amount of meetings that are required by this body, but I feel like it's really important to be able to attend meetings, of course, for your constituents and having some sort of maybe passing C grade, 70%. I don't know what that looks like, but that's something I would really like to see added into here if, moving forward. And maybe there's some sort of caveat for extenuating circumstances, of course, but I think that would be really important.
I guess my question would be, up to this point for the past council people, has this ever been considered making or publishing this?
No, I, like I said, it was, it was brought up in 2011.
And I guess my next question-
And it was discussed, but it was not adopted at that point.
Okay, and was there a reason why it wasn't adopted?
I don't know. I don't know if you've come across anything, Kim?
I haven't. In most new councils, they do adopt some form. On my list of right now, this is going around, people are adopting their new handbook. So it's very, very common.
And then I guess my follow-up question is, how easy is it to amend this once it's adopted?
It's, it's very easy to amend it once it's adopted because it's a resolution the council can say, you know, a year from now. So let's say you adopt it in March, you may want to say, okay, in January next year, we want to come back and revisit and see, are there things we want to add, things we want to delete, things we want to change now that we've had a year under our belt? And my expectation, if you adopted it, would be then, at least every two years, it would come back with council saying, do you still want to, do you still want to do this? And part of that is, you know, right now, we have email as a primary form of communication. In two years, it could be ChatGPT is the only form of communication we use. I, I don't know. And, and so I think it's important to review it and refresh and make sure that, that we're keeping up with changes in technology and people's preferences and all of that.
Back in 2011, it was basically, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It wasn't a big issue for folks. I used to sit in on all the meetings, watching things and they had bigger fish to fry back then. So this was not something that was on the front burner. The, you said a lot of places are adopting these, Kim?
Yes, and it's also good to have a document like this because the council changes, I mean, this council, just in the past couple of years, has changed quite often. People resign, new people come on. So if they have a guiding document to help them rather than a million different handouts, really helps.
And the reason why these other cities, for instance, are adopting it, do, do you know reasons why?
Just updating, updating, yeah, standardizing, you know, look at what other cities do, yeah.
There's no legal implications of why they're adopting it?
No, there's no legal implication, but I do think, I, I do think to some extent, right? You, you could end up with, so this council could say, we don't want people to come speak to us anymore, we want to only have written testimony. And in two years, new council members could say, no, we want people to come and speak to us, right? So it's an opportunity for the council to say, how are we going to operate as a group? It, it's drafted by staff, but it's really your document that says, how are we going to operate and, and what's the face that we're putting out for?
It's a living, breathing document that changes as times change.
No, I, I guess what I'm thinking is that, that sometimes we'll overthink these type of things, instead of just starting the process and adopting a, a plan like this. And, you know, if it's easy to amend, then if there's problems within the text, we can amend it later.
Exactly.
But to just start the process of, of adopting this policy, of course, I want to read through it, make sure there's no crazy stuff in there. it, make sure there's no crazy stuff in there, but.
Well, there is the part that says, you're giving me a big raise.
Isn't, isn't?
There was that crazy part.
That was in your contract.
That's in my contract. It's, my compensation is set until the end of 2024, so.
So has the city not had this before because it wasn't needed or it just wasn't a big enough concern for the city?
I think it hasn't been a big enough of a concern. I think in some years, there have been other issues of bigger concern and it never quite rose to this. And I'll say, a lot of what's in there is really representative of what the past council has been doing. And it's, for me, part of it is just kind of codifying, this is what we've been doing and how we've been doing. So when new people come in and say, how do you put together an agenda? We start laying out that information for you.
Way back then, to say that council sometimes got contentious would be a generous word. With some of the folks that were here, it got, it was like a free floor show. So.
The handbook part feels a little redundant to the charter though, doesn't it?
It is maybe a little redundant with the charter. It's also maybe a little redundant with 2.04. I will say, because Trey and I were back and forth on this, it might be, one course of action might be to take 2.04 and incorporate it into the handbook and take it out of code and make it all part of the handbook, which makes it slightly easier to track, everything is in one place. Alternatively, some of this could be put into 2.04 and all kept there. I think there are aspects here that are, that are in the handbook that I put in, like communication with staff and constituents, I don't think really belongs in code. It's more trying to codify for you all how to deal with that. And I can certainly say all of that and be done with it, but I think having it written lets you come back to it in the future because three quarters of this stuff, you may not, you may not have a land use public hearing for six months. That would be Kelly's dream. But when you get the first one coming through, you may want to go back and reread, oh, what do I do about a land use public hearing, right? What's that procedure? Let me familiarize myself with it. And so that's something, I think having it written out can be helpful.
I think, you know, the city charter is like the organizational mission vision, right? It's how we operate, it's how the city as a whole operates. This is the job description is how I'm looking at it. So someone that applies or decides to run for office can look at this and say, okay, this is what it means, this is what executive sessions mean, this is what, you know, I'm expected, what's expected of me when I become a part of this body. I think people learn that on the fly, of course, in the years past, but it's, we have new and maybe this is something to take a look at. I'm pretty ambivalent about it, but when I think of it as a job description, it makes a little more sense to me.
I feel like, I have a job description and every job description has other duties as applied, you know, that thing? It feels like it would be hard to, I don't know, has attendance been a problem for, you obviously have a feeling about that?
No, that comment is based on, over a decade ago, there was a gentleman that was maybe even appointed and was remote for most of the time just due to the individual's job. And he wound up actually stepping off council, but I know at the time, this was pre-COVID when no one was used to Zoom and no one was used to people on the screens. It was a rather big deal and that was something I was a non-council, but I heard even just as a member of the public that was an issue, so.
Yeah. Actually moved out of state and tried to stay on the council. Be a phone.
So it's your call whether you want to adopt it or not, whether you want to have it or not. It's thrown out just as a concept and you can do with it as you wish. You're the council, you get to make that policy decision. Sorry.
Yeah, but we make work for you and we do.
And if we do open this up, if we do, maybe we should consider the five-minute piece for public comment, shortening that by some minute or two, just as a consideration. So throwing that out there.
It seemed like a lot of people's that meeting thought three was the magic number, kind of surprised that five was our.
It was, I would say at the League of Oregon Cities Training, I think everybody else who was, you know, who was there was like three minutes, three minutes, three minutes. We kept saying, no, we're five, and they kept saying.
Can it be based on their, can it be based on our desire to hear them? Probably not, this joke.
Probably not.
Yeah, I would think, let's play, let's kind of live with this for a month or so, let the new folks.
Yeah, I'm going to read through this and see, like he said, see if it's a duplication of efforts kind of document, so.
We're government, there will be duplication.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but make sure it's not too, the way I look at it kind of is just looking through it just briefly here, it's a little bit more easy to understand than, you know, toe riding over here.
Yeah, one's a regulation, one's the operational guide.
Yeah.
So of course, I want to look at all this and make sure, but yes, I think it should be considered in the future, not because everybody else is doing it, but because it is good to have a, like we called in the military, an SOP on operations. So people can step into roles and easily look something up and go, oh, this is how we do this. Because honestly, the first meeting that we did, I watched past meetings and read through a bunch of stuff to see exactly how to conduct the meeting. So addition to the ones we already have pertaining to the operations of the meetings and roles and responsibilities is, I think is beneficial to, you know, people in the future that are on this council, so anyhow.
Well, I also wanted to be sure you had those contracts since you do have responsibility for those and I think that's important for you all to know. So thank you. That was all that I had for today and.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anything from staff that's in attendance? No comments? There's no public comments today on this meeting, so sorry. Anything from council?
I'm good.
Okay, then we adjourn the work session.